I've got this regular meeting of the GSD 417 Board of Education to order. I think first thing we'll do, since we've got some new people sitting in the room, is we'll start with introductions. I'm Tina R. Scott.
Mary Myers.
Kelsey Hartman.
Jamie Johnson.
Billy Glinsky.
Terry Bowles.
Angie Stuckland.
Heather Honus.
Elsie Brimmer.
Kelly Gentry.
Dana Reddick.
Darrell Coleman.
Valerie Geer.
Daryl Coleman.
Bryce Johnson.
Jim Crowe.
Aaron Doty.
Lori Blythe. Hi.
The consent agenda. And so this evening's consent agenda, approval of the agenda, approved minutes of the previous meetings, financial reports, bills presented for payment in the amount of $342,372.66, donations and gifts, approval of the district wellness plans for the elementary, junior high and high school, approval of the 2023-2024 coaches handbook, approval of the 2023-2024 transportation handbook, the Flint Hills Special Education Co-op Articles of Agreement that include correspondence regarding the classification, or sorry, clarification of financial responsibilities for both the LEAs and the Flint Hills Special Education Cooperative, the Fiscal Year 24 Special Education Due Process Hearing Officers, the local IDEA Part C to Part B Transition Memorandum of Understanding, and the Articles of Agreement to Maintain a Comprehensive Special Education Cooperative. Under personnel with employment, we have Mindy Unruh as the Council Grove Elementary School Aid Interventionist, replacing Laura Balboa, Valerie Geer, USD 417 Curriculum Coordinator, replacing Kelly Gentry, Brianna Allen, Assistant Girl Softball Coach, replacing Amy Finch. Resignations, Mindy Unruh as the Council Grove Elementary School Kitchen Staff, Laura Balboa as the Council Grove Elementary School Aid Interventionalist, Reina Pollock, I'm sorry, Pollock as the Prairie Heights Elementary School Aid, Bria Butler as the Prairie Heights Elementary School Teacher, and Kelly Gentry as the USD 417 Curriculum Coordinator. Is there anything you would like to see removed from the consent agenda? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there a second? All second. Moved by Terry, seconded by Jamie, that we approve the consent agenda as presented. All in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Patron forum. And I'm going to speak to both Jim and Bryce this evening, since we've got, was, gentlemen, was there anyone who wished to address the board this evening? Thank you. Then we'll move right into our reports. We did receive those from the administrators, and we'll see if any official, any further additions are to be made. Mrs. Gentry? Mrs. Honus? Mr. Doran Bass? Mrs. Garrett? Mrs. Reddick? Mrs. Brimmer? Bryce, Jim, anything that you would like to add? Dr. Doty?
Just a quick update. Online enrollment will open up on July 2. And then onsite enrollment this year will be 27th through 28th of July. And just reminder that the buildings are busy but in different capacity now, some are maintenance is underway, and so the crews are diligently going out and getting a lot of work done this summer, so. Just a lot of activity going on. Camps and building rentals are going on, so their administrators have been working on those as well, accommodating those that are still busy, so. Lots of activity in the summer, just a different type of crew.
A couple things. I had reached out to Jim, Mr. Crosby, sorry, to have him bring back or share out prior to our next meeting some information around consent agenda. It continues to be something that the board asks questions around. For instance, can we talk during a, can we ask questions? What if we need to have a discussion item or, you know, talk about something on that? And so I reached out to him, he'll bring that information back, or he will just send it out in the meantime, and we can have a dialogue next time if there's still questions about the use of the consent agenda. I also wanted to thank Dana for her spreadsheet of information that we get, and just to make sure that if there's something the system needs to be doing to support something in all these colors, that hopefully you would let us know. Yeah, I love to read data, so this, this is fun for me. Yeah, and that's it. Jim and that, Mr. Crosby, does that sound like what I asked, asked of you? Okay, thank you.
Any other members of the board? I have two things. First, I have a thank you note that I'm going to pass around from one of our retiring staff members. So feel free to look at that this evening as that comes around. And then just a reminder that the very first orders of business in July are officer elections around these tables. So just reminding everybody that that's something that you're interested in, too. Please be thinking about that. That's all I have. We'll jump right into our first discussion item, which is our facilities study, and with Mr. Darrell Coleman.
Well, first of all, thanks for bringing us in. I'm Darrell Coleman. I work for DCS Services. You hired us to do a facilities assessment, and so I'm coming to you with the initial report of that assessment and, and talk about next steps. The first phase you guys have gotten through, that's where the architect, which in this case was a landmark architect, and the engineers, which was LST, have visited, they took pictures, they make their assessment, and then we put it together in a booklet that you should have received, and and so you have all the information I'm going to be going over tonight. The second phase is a little bit about a combination of what you see in the report with recommendations on how to correct any of the issues. And then it leads into, as the board looks at those and discusses with the administrator, administrative team, prioritizing those items that you want us to bring early preliminary numbers to, budgetary numbers. We will do that. And then as you see those, that may change your priority, and, or you may increase other items. And then the next step, which is phase three, is we get the engineer and the architect to give you some simple schematic plans, not necessarily architectural drawings, but the simple plans where we can give you a much more defined and definitive cost estimates to address the facility needs that, that are in this. It's broken down by buildings, and so I'm just going to kind of give a highlight of each of the buildings. And, you know, if you've looked at it, you know that we use a color coding system to keep it simple. There's, the greens are good. That means that you probably got 10-plus years with that before you'll have to address any of the needs that are labeled as green. Yellow is fair, which typically means you got five to 10 years. And we try to, you'll see a lot of yellows where its life expectancy has been met or is close to being met, and so you just need to be thinking about that, that area. I'll use HVAC, for example. If a unit shows up as yellow, then it's still functioning, it's still good, but in the next five to 10 years, you're probably looking at having to replace it. And then the red is in poor condition, and we would say that the replacement or, or the updating of whatever that's labeled as is immediate or as soon as you can get to financially. So the other thing that each building does is we list the, the top areas of need for each building. So when I look at Council Grove Elementary is the first one. One of the areas of needs is an ADA restroom access, and we'll talk about that because it probably right now meets the code of when that building was built. But if you were to, if you were to do any work there, or if you really wanted to update to come to the new code, we've got a suggested solution to that. There's just some basic ventilation exhaust systems in that building that, that are of some concern. Not all windows, but there are a whole set of windows that we would recommend that you replace for, for a little energy savings, also some safety concerns. There's some concrete, which again, I'll, I'll highlight when I get to that. There's some flooring, and so I know some of that's being met, and you already have a plan for some flooring. So if we hit that, and you think, oh, I thought we took care of that, you might have, or you might have a plan to do that, but what, what we saw, it says showers, there's a set of showers there that aren't being used anymore, and so our suggestion would be to cap those off and, and avoid having any issues that might come with showers that aren't being used. There are some roofing issues in that building, and then I'll talk about this more specifically, but what we consider to be a life safety issue with a storm shelter, and I'll talk about that in more detail. But as we, as we move through that, that building, one of the, on the outside, architecturally speaking, on your addition, there's an external metal panels, the walls of the gymnasium, that have some minor damage to them. We always are concerned about water infiltration, and so we would just suggest that you keep an eye on those seams and making sure that they're watertight, and if they're not, you know, again, not something that we necessarily need to come in and do, but adding some caulking or other whatever measures you need to, to keep that area watertight. Because once you get water behind those panels, they will create bigger issues. The windows, like I said, the one that they want to talk about are in the multipurpose room. If you saw the picture right now, there's these windows, and then there are wood slats going across it. They call it nailers in, in the assessment to protect them from, I think, random balls and other things that happen in the multipurpose room. We would suggest you change out those windows and make that, if you want that protection, is not having that much glass and having a more solid barrier there. So that was the window part. There's also some, some aluminum windows in that building that are in the yellow, so they added that. That's another reason why we would suggest that they're at the end of life, and you might want to replace them, or at least maintain the joint seals around them. Moving on then, and if you have questions at any time, just raise your hand, but otherwise I'm going to cruise. There's some concrete in that interior courtyard, if you've ever been there, which you guys probably have been. A lot of cracking, and so you'll get water again infiltrating that area. We would suggest that you start to consider replacing that. The, the difficulty in that is it's an interior courtyard, so giving the concrete there, there are solutions, I'm telling you, but that, it's not like pouring concrete in, in the, on the sidewalk, but we, we, we would definitely have that. Flooring was one of the things that was listed, and so there's a couple of different spots. There's some VCT flooring in the multipurpose room, in the janitor's closet with some staining, and we would, and I think there's some wear too. VCT is not really recommended for that type of area. We would more likely recommend that you put some type of resinous flooring. You might know it more as epoxy coating, which I think, when I talked to Mr. Doty about this, he's like, yeah, we've been doing that as we've been replacing. Getting away from tile, tile has a lifespan, and some of the tile doesn't make it to the lifespan, so you're always replacing those pieces, so. In fact, in some of your older classrooms, there you have nine-by-nine inch tiles that are what are called VAT tiles, and the A is asbestos. And so replacing those, that used to be really scary to districts, replacing anything with asbestos. That, that has changed a little bit, technology. They really just wet it down. You just got to keep it away from becoming friable or airborne, and so they'll wet it down and dispose of it. It's not like you used to hear where they closed the whole building off and had to bring in air. That, that, that's not typically what happens now, but we, we would suggest that. Any questions on those, those floorings? The, the next area in that building is, again, going back into the multipurpose room, there's insulated panels in that, in the ceiling of that room, and either prior past leaks or current leaks, we think they're past leaks, have stained it, plus it's a multipurpose room, they've probably been hit by balls again and things like that. So replacement of those would be recommended. And then the floor in that building, again, is linoleum, and so looking at replacement of, of that to a better type of flooring for a multipurpose room than, than linoleum. When we get into the, into that building and into the more engineering side, which gets into plumbing, electrical and mechanical, the shower that I talked about, that shower area, we would just recommend that you take out those showers, the heads and the faucets and all that, because if you're not using them, why have an area that could leak? And you might be able to repurpose that area for something else if you're not going to ever use it. With your plumbing, they're, they, they label it as interceptors, or there's none installed. Interceptors is really just a fancier way of saying grease traps. And, and so in that building, there, there's, it's not as high-tech as it sounds. It's literally a box that it put in. Water flows through it, gives time for the grease to settle out, and then you have to clean that out every once in a while. That would, if in any new build, that would happen automatically, it would be, it's part of code. Also, there's, there's no circulation pumps on, on some of the plumbing where we would think that it would help. And again, in a new build, that would happen, but you can do it secondarily, so. Like I said, one of the big ones I talked about, you know, they highlighted was vents and, and air circulation or venting. And so your hot water unit ventilators are either at the end of life or, or are at a point where they're not really functioning like they should in, in some of the hot water units. There's some, so that, that's part of that. There's also some kitchen exhaust and some bathroom exhaust the same way. They're, they're probably not moving as much air as you want, and they're not connected to your HVAC system, so that when they are moving, it's probably impacting your, your HVAC system in a negative way. Either drawing out more air than it's getting replaced or causing it to work harder. That, that, if you have a control system and those are all tied together, that helps that. While we're on HVAC, you have some rooftop units and some split systems that are currently coming to the end of life. And, and so looking at replacing those. And the good news for you is rooftop units and splitback systems or split systems don't, they have about a 13-week lead way, whereas if you were into chillers, chillers are currently at about a 54-week lead time. So you order them today, you get them next year. That's what that comes down to. When you look at your electrical system in that building, it really was mostly greens. But the yellows were stuff that really are more of a little bit of cabling and getting those, installing cabling tray systems and things like that, putting them above the systems. I told Mr. Doty one of the good parts that I usually see that you don't have a problem with. You have an updated fire alarm system and your intercom system, speakers and clock system is updated. That's, that's one that I usually almost always see in buildings that needs updated because they're digital. Some of them are digital, and if a part breaks, you're not getting it because they don't make them anymore. And, and so you're one bad day away, you know, from not having those things. So you guys have done well on keeping that up to date. So that's the elementary school here in Council Grove. Any questions? Now, I'm just going to jump right over to Prairie Heights, and again, the areas of need, oh, I was going to talk about the storm shelter. I'm sorry. The storm shelter, it talks about it. The way they explain it is, you have areas that you're taking your students to that are perfectly fine and meet all the laws and regulations that there are. But if you were ever to build on to that building, we would suggest, or the architect would suggest, that you make them tornado safe. You don't have to make them FEMA tornado safe. That, that gets really expensive. But there are things you can do to just make it more tornado safe, because there's no below ground level in that building to take people to. So any new addition or any new build on that building, we, we would highly recommend that you do it where it becomes, again, I, I want to be careful about the wording you use because it's storm resistant. It's tornado safe takes a whole nother level, and it adds about 50 to 75% to the cost. And, and most of the time, most people are fine and feel safe with the storm resistant. And, and so that would be a recommendation to anything new that you build there. Same way at Prairie Heights, it, it has the same storm shelter issue. Again, it's really about, those are all, all parts of those buildings are above ground. So you don't even have that quote-unquote basement that you go down to. And so any new build, we would suggest that you would consider putting in storm resistant. Those areas be storm resistant. There is another ADA requirement there with the restrooms. The one at Council Grove, we're recommending that there's a staff bathroom that could easily be upgraded to be ADA. It would be compliant, and, and then you just have to have one in the building, and that would suffice. Same way here at Prairie Heights. Some of the other things that they talk about there that are areas of needs are doors and exterior wall panels, soffits, there's some plumbing, some sidewalks and railings, some flooring there too. A little bit of lighting, but after, again, going over this with, with Mr. Doty, I think as you, as your floor, less than lights go out, you're replacing with LEDs, so you're, you're kind of taking care of that. So I'm not going to spend a lot of time there. A little bit of exhaust systems, and in that building, our architects said that there was probably some need for additional storage. I will tell you that I don't know any school that doesn't need additional storage, but when an architect mentions it, it's probably, he, he, she noticed it and probably saw things stacked in places where it wasn't convenient, so. But again, those metal wall panels on the outside, there's been some damage either from lawnmowers or other equipment bumping into them, and so you just want to make sure that stays watertight. But the exterior doors there, the panels and the doors, some of them are hollow metal doors, they're starting to rust out. So you'll want to replace those. Usually, if you know how, think about that building, the entryway, you've got two glass panels. In this day and age, getting rid of glass is commonplace because it's just easy to get into, it's just another entry point. But even the glass doors, we would suggest reducing the amount of glass in those glass doors down to a smaller amount of glass. And that's a safety factor, but those doors are, are starting to become an end of life. And there's some other exterior doors there that are aluminum or hollow metal, and they're in a little better condition, but at some point in time, all of the metal ones probably are past there. They've been installed for 25-plus years, and it's time for them to be replaced. And we go with the more weather-resistant type of doors now, so there's a combination there. The roof soffits at, at that building are currently plywood, and either new plywood needs to be put up, or really the better option would be to put a pre-finished metal soffit, because then you never have to paint it, and it's metal, and so underneath it doesn't tend to rust and that type of thing. So if you're going to replace it, we would suggest you do it with metal and not with plywood that you have to continually paint. There's a entry, it's off the southeast gym exit that has an overhang on it that it needs replaced or removed, and there's probably a reason why it's there. It's that weather protection as you're coming in and out. So if you're going to replace it, we, we would suggest that, again, it'd be more durable and maintenance-free, so getting rid of all the wood parts and putting in metal parts. In that building, also around it, there are some paving where it's cracked, it's raised, which, and then there's some railing that is rusted out and some that's even missing. Some of that, again, you can do locally, or you can have us do it, or we, we will hire somebody in to do. Basically, what they typically do is cut out what's there, bore out where the metal went down into the ground and replace it with metal, so. Storage, as I mentioned, they just found a lot of, there's not a lot of space for storage. But then when we get into the, the more engineering side or the mechanical side of things, one of the things they mentioned is the toilets, they call them water closets, but the toilets are flush tank water closets, and, and they don't have the best flushing performance in them, and it's probably because of the age that they are, and they just need to be updated to a newer form. Labatories are okay. There's a circulation pump that is connected to your water heater circulating that. And the gas-water heater circulation pump is starting to show signs of corrosion, and whenever you start to see the corrosion on the outside, the inside's worse, and, and it'll be a few days. There's some, again, drainage and vent piping that is the old cast iron and just needs replaced. Some of the urinals have the same issue, they're, they're not flowing very well, and there's a set of showers there that are not being used either. That could be capped and moved. One of the things that the engineers always, anytime they see a gate valve or, or a type of where you twist to shut off a valve, they will always recommend that you replace that with a ball valve where it's either on or off, and it's a handle instead of you turning it, because they don't rust and get stuck and make it harder to fix and shut off water. There was a wall heater that they recommended either being replaced or even just remove. It's past its life expectancy. Again, some exhaust in the kitchen and elsewhere in the restrooms that aren't large enough or not operating at, at a higher, high enough capacity to fully function. Gym lighting there is an older version, and they're high bay luminaries, which take time to warm up and all that. At some point, you might want to replace those with LED lighting. The exterior lighting on the outside of that building has some broken lenses, and it's also not LED, so we would suggest you do that. The intercom system there is not updated, so. Is it working?
It does.
Okay, well, there you go. But at any point in time, I'll just tell you, find it a part for that, we'll make your IT guy go crazy. And, and so that would be something that you might want to look at, updating the intercom system there. The fire alarm system is, it was green and is in good shape, which again, is what we see a lot of. And, and it's always surprises boards how expensive fire alarm systems can be. You're talking about a hundred thousand plus dollar even in a smaller building. It just takes a lot. But you're, you're good there. So questions on the Prairie Heights building? Those are your good newses, I will tell you that. I don't know if you know this, but your junior high, high school is older. I mean, it's just older, and, and there's new sections, I know, but overall, there's a section there that's got some age on it. And with age, it becomes some of the issues that I'll talk about. The biggest one there, and I don't know what the solution is, you know, there's always a solution. That's one thing that architects have taught me, is there's always a solution. But the secured entranceway in that building, you know, right now it's secured by the fact that you have to buzz in, but when you buzz in, you're free to move about wherever you want to without that going through the office or at least, you know, those types of the way that front door is designed and what's around it. That, I don't know exactly what the solution is, but the architect informed me that there's always a solution, so don't worry about it. And I was like, all right. Uh and I was like, all right, I'll just report that that that's one. Storm shelters again is another one there. Um she also talked about modern learning spaces again, talking about when you get into the older part of that building. The rooms are smaller, not necessarily built for the type of teaching and instruction that goes on today. Um that HVAC is a is a concern there, electrical switchboards and panels again in the older part of the building. Um plumbing, pipe fixtures, some concrete and paving, there's some masonry that I'll hit on. Some roofing that I think you guys have addressed. You also have a plan for that, which is always, we always like to hear. Um and then storage was another one listed there. So I I don't know who got into the architect's ear, but storage was an issue with that building. But the the first part I want to talk about in the older part. Um and if you look through the booklet, the picture is really good. You've got you've got some brick that. The the masonry of it, it needs to be tuck pointed. There's some bricks that need to be replaced. And then there's some capping all over in the older section, especially that that needs to be updated too. So. Really, all the exterior masonry walls, flashing storefronts um should just always be reviewed. And that's one that you can walk by a lot and you just don't notice, but the ones that are high up. You've got to make a point to look up there and and that's where most of the issues that that you have are at the higher um elevations. And it's really where the two buildings meet. So that piece. Then, like I said, I already talked a little bit about the roofing, but I I'm not going to spend a lot of time on it because I think you have a plan. But I'm just telling you, you have some. Older roofing style that they don't even do anymore because it wasn't very good when they were doing it. It just doesn't have a very long life expectancy. Now you'll see more things like TPO and and other, but what what you have is basically really big, long shingles that they just roll out. And then they asphalt it down and and it has a little piece. It looks like a shingle of your house except for it's fifty feet long and five feet wide. And 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 those, they found out every one of those seams over time leaks. So now we try to go to where there's not as many seams and and they, to be honest with you. We didn't know the date, but from what the the architect could tell, she felt like it was maybe up end of life anyway. So it it would have needed to be replaced anyway. So it's not like it was just put in two years ago. It it's it's lived it, but we're not going to go back with that kind. We'll go back with um. Some other version, usually TPO is what we use, which is what most of you think of on flat roofs now. Don't get me started on flat roofs. Argued with architects since I got into being a superintendent about why do we put flat roofs? I mean, they don't make sense, but they tell me the cost. Of putting in a pitched roof on that square footage would make you put in a flat roof. So um there's some. Like I talked about, there's some metal and capping around the roof that just needs to have some maintenance done to it. Um if it's the area where the roofing is going to happen, that's going to happen naturally anyway. But um. Uh but some some of the downspouts, just making sure that they line up. You have a lot of downspouts that run into underground. Drains, which is great. It gets away from the building as long as they line up and and they're working. So we just recommend. At the roof, few that maybe I think have been taken care of, uh that weren't quite lined up where the. Roof downstairs ended in the the ground um drain started, there was a gap and they weren't quite lined up. So making sure you, the gap's not a problem. It's just making sure they line up. There's quite a bit of sidewalk uh work around the art room and the greenhouse and a little bit around the the band room. That some concrete work that just needs to be be taken care of. They're presenting um. Tripping hazards, some drainage issues too. Um so just just looking at that paving all the way around. Even in the parking lot on the west end, um they marked that area. So. Ceiling tile and finish, and I I think this was one that maybe is being addressed, but the corridors and the two story connecting portion of the building. Have blue up ceiling tile and connecting the corridor to them has painted plywood. And we would suggest that that be replaced um and lighting upgrades put in there too, just for aesthetics. It's got fluorescent lighting instead of LED lighting like you have here. There are some, again, uh vinyl uh asbestos tiling. In in and I think Mr. Dody, is that the one you told me is being replaced right now? Kudos to getting that taken care of. Storage I already talked about. The secure entrance I I I discussed too. Um. Getting into the mechanical side again, there's some some urinals and and toilets that are a mixed floor mounted. And some are wall mounted and you probably would want to go to wall mounted. They're they're better. They're they're more efficient. Um and and you have some that are not um flushing at the with the power that you'd want them to flush with. You've got some water piping in in one area that was older than nineteen eighty-four and it's starting to show some corrosion. So we would suggest that of being upgraded. And then there's quite a bit of HVAC um all over the building in different spots. You've got some wall mounted units that A aren't very efficient and and B are at the end of life. Um and finding parts for those kinds of things aren't easy. We're redoing a school right now. They're doing part of them this summer, but they're keeping all the ones we're taking out. So that they can still parts when they go out next winter because they can only do so much this summer. Actually, they could do more, but we don't, we can't get them in time. I mean, just not the time it takes. So. Um and then you have some split system of HVACs. Um your ag shop, the 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 ventilation is not up to what would be code now. It would have been perfectly fine when that ag shop was put in, but now you look more at each individual welding station has its own ventilation. Um if you have a plasma cutter, which I don't know if you do or not, but anytime you have each individual part. Especially the welding part actually has its own ventilation system um to keep those toxic fumes that. People breathe breathe in in the past, but now you don't want to. Um I'm sure I I have never been in a building. I know how our shop was. You go in there and there's a haze of smoke in there. And you know, that's something. The heating system in there is the original from the seventies, so you can imagine how highly efficient it is. And so we're suggesting that be changed. And again, you usually have to hook up your your exhaust with any new HVAC. So that they work together um keeping the air pressure and air movement constant. You do have some electrical boxes that are uh what we would consider out of date and need to be updated. Again, I don't know that that surprises anybody considering the age of parts of that building. Again, great, your fire alarm and your intercom and all that is very much up to date and and spot on. And then we did do this building too. And the biggest areas there are a little bit about HVAC, electrical and some lighting. There's a few areas that haven't been updated. Um there's a few plumbing issues and then on the addition, the back addition, um the metal panels again. There, I've not seen a building that has those type of panels where an architect didn't list them as being. Check them out, make sure they're staying watertight because after they have some age, you can just want to do that. So specifically here, the gravel parking lot could use some more gravel and spread around. The HVAC system here could use the split system as is uh, the age is unknown, so it's most likely at the end of life. The electric water heater is near the end of life because it had a date on it. Um there's a mix of galvanized copper and PEX piping. Um so we would recommend sometime replacing that. There's a bunch of gate valves. We would remember again, I already talked about replacing the ball valves. Um and then I think the lighting that's it's probably being replaced as it happens. So all of those things are 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 the areas I. One of the things I like to do is kind of hit where there's beams. So the ADA restroom access at both elementary schools, that was, you know, when you see it at both places. Concrete at both buildings here in town at the elementary and at the high school. There, that was one that was seen on in more than one place. Flooring at both elementary schools. I took the high school off because I think it's it's being taken care of. Roofing at both the elementary and at the junior high and high school. And then those life safeties, storm shelter issues that I talked about. Just again, just a recommendation that any new build that happens, you'll want to look at making it tornado or storm resistant. So questions?
The boiler rooms aren't.
They are. That's where we all went, I know. Um you know, it's 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 always interesting, you know, and and I've. In the district prior to this, I was next door to Greensburg. So I mean, I've seen what what it can do in a building. But I just know that there used to be FEMA money that you could do a FEMA tornado show uh safe. And they paid for quite a bit of that ran out and has never been replaced. So we see very few people going to that level of FEMA, but we'll give you where an architect says I go. Confident that this is safe, a a lot like you see in houses, safe rooms. That's what it ends up being. It's just a bigger version of that. So.
I noticed you didn't, you mentioned the things that kind of repeated in some of the schools, but the HVAC and the heating system at the high school. Let me go back. The things that rose to the top.
Yeah.
Um sounded like from your lens that those would be a priority. Um what about the HVAC heating system at the high school?
Yeah, I think those areas that are highlighted in red, those need to be a priority just because what's going to happen? I mean, this this is the scary thing about end of life. It's working fine today.
Well, of course, right.
But tomorrow it's not. And then you're trying to fix something that's at end of life and you're putting money into something. That we would tell you, you're better off in the long run replacing. And so when you start to prioritize, I mean, I think the first priorities, I kind of hit some of those, but you might have other things. And that doesn't include anything that you want to add if you want, if there's dreams of whatever, you know, a new CTE or whatever. I don't know what they might be. That's not listed in here, but you might have those. You can put those in our priority list. We'll price them out for you so that you can decide. Um because what we see happen is the next step, you prioritize, we come and give you some pricing. And then boards start talking about, what can we do with capital outlay? On a yearly, and we'll help you set up a yearly facilities plan. Are there things that we can't do with capital outlay and we're going to have to look at other options, which, you know, in in school world, there's only two other options you have besides paying cash. Is you could do lease purchases and which is borrowing money on a ten year maximum, right? Want to make sure the attorney's in the room. I don't want to say the wrong thing. And then, or you could do a bond. And you know, bonds are bonds. They they are what they are and they come with an election and and you know. Depending on where you get to an amount, a bond may be what happens. Um but that doesn't mean it can't be a combination of all those things. So we we see people do lease purchases with HVAC a lot. Um and that's fine. Um some people, it it, you know, everybody, if you don't think schools, schools in Kansas are diverse in financial. I'll just tell you that. There there's a district not very far from you that generates, it's the same size of district you are basically. And generates two and a half million dollars a year in their capital outlet. Okay? Their assessed value is at that level, you know, even where I came at, Emrahal Central, our assessed value for two hundred and twenty-two square miles is. When I left, it was a hundred and five million. I'm sure now it's probably at a hundred and twenty million. Uh you can collect a lot of capital outlay off of that. And I don't know what your guys' assessed value is, but. You know, I know districts, I know districts this size that it's twenty-nine million. And so for every mill, you generate twenty-nine thousand dollars. It's hard to do things with capital outlay when you're doing a path line. So then you have to look at the other two options and and we help you with that either way, you know. Bond takes a, you you've got to go through a process and interview construction management at these companies. If that's the way you decide to go, but I'm not even going to talk about the other way because I don't think that's where you want to go. Whereas lease purchase or votes, and it happens, you don't have to have an election. You can hire a construction management company like ourselves to do the work. The beauty of the work we do is we meet, uh because we're the selected vendor for Green Bush's cooperative um purchasing group. We meet the bid laws. She's not giving me a dirty look, so we must be doing it by doing that, by being that member. That doesn't mean we don't bid it out. We bid it out. We just do that work for you and then we bring you on bid and you approve it. And you can do that while still meeting the laws because we're the selected vendor. So. So I'll leave you with that. If you have other questions, I'll answer, but your your next step would be to tell us. What you prioritize and then we'll come out with our estimator and start doing some pricing for you. And then come back and say, here's the very ballpark thing here. And you're like, oh, that was less than we thought.
That never happens, by the way.
But let's say it did. Then you're like, just do them all. And we're like, okay, we'll do it. Usually it's a resetting of the priorities or deciding how you're going to fight. I mean, that's really what comes down. Other question? Good. Thank you for giving me your time. As a former superintendent, this is my favorite part. I I get to go home. And although it's a little dry, I, you know, it's still not as late as supposed to be usually. So. Thank you again. Um I know some of you I've met at KSB's conference and things like that. So if you need anything, let me know or at Mr. Dody, let me know and we'll we'll be more than happy. We like to call ourselves the one stop easy shop. We we do it all for you. We get the bids, we we get the workers. We do no self performance. So there's no incentive to us of coming in and and try to sell you a certain thing because we don't do the work. We bid it out and then we manage it for you. And and if you're doing it as a project. There are our fees real flat. It's ten percent of whatever the project is. When you get to see me our work, that's a whole different one. Because there's an economy to scale. So the percent drops considerably from ten percent. And and depending on how big the bond is, it can get low. So. But that's for another time discussions. All right? Thank you. Enjoy your evening. I'm going to drive through storms.
Thanks, Dan.
The next um item on our agenda is our action item, the RFP twenty twenty-four dash zero zero one. To remove and replace the decking and the framing at Council Grove Elementary School.
So Jim, can I update you? We did the bid openings today on that and we updated the packet with the two bid proposals that were turned in. Jim, you want to run through those?
Sure. So um uh we sent it out for bid. Uh closing was today at two o'clock, uh unsealed the bids at three o'clock. Um Dr. Dody, myself, Bryce and Joe Cormannick from K Construction was there. Uh the two bids that we had were from K Construction, uh which was a little more than seventy-nine thousand dollars. Uh then we had a bid from Honus Construction for sixty-six thousand seven hundred dollars. Um there's also in your in your packet, um uh each of those bids is in there. And then there's also a cover letter that we've come up with um that we can place in our file. Uh so that when an auditor comes to look at our bids, uh everything is a one stop shop there.
So we'd recommend a approved Honus Construction bid for sixty-six thousand seven hundred dollars for that project.
Read that whole thing?
Yes.
Okay. I move to approve. We follow the Kansas Bid Law RFP twenty twenty-four, when am I right, thing, zero zero one. Um that was placed into circulation on May twenty-third, twenty twenty-three, closed on June fifth, twenty twenty-three at two PM. And all bids were unsealed on June fifth, twenty twenty-three at three PM. Based on the sealed bid process, we request that Honus Construction be hired to complete the scope of work presented in the RFP for the sum not to exceed sixty-six thousand seven hundred. for the sum not to exceed $66,700.
Second.
It's been moved by Kelsey, seconded by Billy, that based on the still bid prep process, we request that Honus Construction be hired to complete the scope of the work presented in the RFP for the sum not to exceed $66,700. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote, all in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you, motion carries, opposed. All right. Our next item of business is the 2023-2024 KSB Workman's Compensation Renewal.
The information's in your packet, is there any questions over? Obviously, we have a significant increase in our premium, but you can see why, based on the, the date that was in the package, explains that increase.
So it looks like our premium is increasing $28,298.
It was estimated to be 47,363, so $47,363. And then, but based on the calculations from the actual losses and payouts, um, it increased it, it increased the amount to $75,661, which is an increase of $28,298.
Dr. Dody, is this calculated every year then, based on what goes on a year before?
The prior three years.
Oh, three years.
Yeah, it's a rolling factor. So we'll get a new calculation next year, one year will drop off, we'll add previous year that just continues to roll that three-year average like that.
So when, in looking at that number grow, are there things that we can be doing proactively? I'm proving my ignorance here. Safety measures, training, any of those kinds of things that, that can lower that number?
There's always something we can do to help improve job safety and performance. Finding that sometimes is a magic bullet. So for instance, anytime we have a claim that has to be investigated, and then that's sent in, and if there are things that, that work comp company finds and says, hey, this could have been avoided, or we would recommend you do this, we always, we would always implement those recommendations. To my knowledge, most of these claims were injury accidents from on the job, typically associated with a student at the time. So they're in the moment type accidents where it wasn't an equipment failure, or a, um, a dangerous work environment from a climb a ladder, so to speak, or in the moment situation with a student, which is sometimes not a lot of training you can do. We do do things like CPI, seclusion restraint training for our staff and so forth, which helps in those, and sometimes you're in the wrong position, and the student shifts or wait, and blow knee out, or you fall and, and have an accident, so.
Yeah, understood.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Hearing none, I would, I would turn the motion. Yeah, that very bottom bullet.
Right. Madam President, I move that, I'm not even sure how to say it that way. Just read it, just like this, or I need to read it all?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, thank you, okay. All right. Madam President, I move that we approve the 2023-2024 Workman Compensation Policy Increase. Am I ready to read the increase?
Just the total amount.
Uh, with the premium based on an estimated $75,661.
All right. It's been moved by Mary Kay, seconded by Marie, that we approve the 2023-2024 Workers' Compensation Policy Increase in the dollar amount of $75,661. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you, opposing sign, motion carries. The next item is our KDHE Window Replacement Project.
So earlier in the year, KDHE approved grants in the amount of $150,000 per building. Well, actually, the total amount's $294,793, you're just shy of $300,000, with a cap of $150,000 per building. So each building can exceed $150,000 for Council Grove Elementary School and Council Grove Junior Senior High School. So with a project that size, um, I'm recommending that we hire Ben Moore, architectural firm who oversees, he's done projects with us before here in this district, then he'll handle the bid process, and he'll oversee, um, the vendor from installation to, to the final walkthrough. Um, I'm not a window expert, our maintenance guys aren't windows experts, so having someone that has that knowledge come in for that scope of project. Um, his fee is $6,000 per building, so it's a total of $12,000. Um, and that would, in that fee includes, um, the spec book that they put together, communicating with the vendors, and then handling the bid process for us, finalizing the bid process, and then overseeing the work when, as it's being done, and finalizing the walkthrough when it's completed.
Will this grant cover the windows, that's what I ask?
Possibly, yeah.
That's quite a bit less. That's quite a bit less, if I'm reading it correctly, than what they are allowing. Like, the 12,000 is quite a bit less than the 150 per.
Right, so.
Paying, then we're $12,000.
Yeah.
I think, yes. I'm so sorry, I misunderstood.
No, 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 good question.
That makes a lot more sense, because when I read that, I was like.
Yeah. I wish it was.
We were all gonna call.
You're right, we're all calling bid.
Yeah. But no, great question for clarification.
Sorry, I misunderstood.
We will, so part of the grant is to improve airflow in, in the buildings, and so not every window that needs replaced would get replaced. It depends on, um, if it's a window that we need to add to help increase, that needs to be able to be open to increase air capacity or exchanging air in, in the building. So it probably won't address, it'll probably address some of the windows that are needed in that facility assessment, but I would, I wouldn't say it would address all of them.
Right, and it's kind of prioritizes those areas where your students are, and, and because it does end up at, at COVID-19 grant that talks about ventilation improvement for kids with a reading.
Yeah. And the other piece of this, um, these funds have to be spent by the end of July, and so there's no way, you just heard the materials were outsourced soon. So it is okay, though, if we get, um, a vendor to bid and approve the work and turn in their invoices to do the work, we can pay them, and then have them come get the work, complete the work after the July date, um, and still be covered in the grant. But we have to have the invoice, everything, the process done, the invoicing in, and then their help too, obviously, because they can't come back after the fact, so it's gonna cost them extra dollars for more. So we'll get on that process pretty quick. If this is approved tonight, um, I actually have been doing some preliminary work just to expediate it. If we don't approve it, it'll just die, um, and then he won't continue that work. But he'll send out the RFP, get that going, we'll actually do bid openings, uh, later this month for that, so we can put it on the July, uh, board agenda for approval.
So what we're looking for is just the approval for Ben Moore Studios in the amount of $12,000 to oversee the projects.
I move that we hire Ben Moore to oversee the projects of the window replacement grants for the elementary school and junior senior high school. Total cost to Ben not to exceed $12,000.
It's been moved by Terry, seconded by Mary Kay, to hire Ben Moore Studios to oversee the KDHE Window Replacement Grant Project at the Council Grove Elementary School and the Council Grove Junior Senior High School, um, for a total amount not to exceed $12,000. Is there any further discussion?
Mary Kay.
Yes.
All in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you, opposed, same sign, motion carries. Next action item is the Mental Health Intervention Team, MHIT Grant Application for 2023-2024.
So this is the, the grant that provides our mental health, um, intervention team liaison, which is Mr. Sam Romani. It is a 75%, 25% matching grant, so what we, the state pays 75% of our request, and then we pay 25%. So we did get together and complete the application, submit it, because it was due. It's due, I think, towards the end of this month, so we got the signatures and everything done. So we're ready to, to get it going in the MOUs with our mental health provider, which is required as part of it. So this year, it's, um, we just added, uh, the three, uh, 3% increase to salary, um, and adjusted the insurance, social security. So the claim, the amount we're requesting this year from the state is very similar to the last year, but had 3% to it. It's totals, um, a total amount of $62,350. And then the state will actually match 25% of that to our local mental health services, which helps pay for therapists that they send, to help with some of our situations. And then we'll pay 25% of that, which would cost us the $15,000, and then the school, uh, MHIT grant would pay the $46,763. So we get that mental health liaison position for out of our district budget of $15,587 for that position.
I approve that we re-enter into the Mental Health Intervention Team Grant Program for the 2023-2024 school year for our portion of the, do we need the $62,350 in the motion?
No, you just, I mean, just approve the grant, it's written into the grant.
Strike that, just enter into the MHIT grant program for the 2023-2024 school year.
Just as long as you're all aware of the amount, you're comfortable with that.
It's been moved by Jamie and seconded by Billy, um, that we approve the application for the Mental Health Intervention Team, the MHIT grant for the 2023-2024 school year. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you, opposed, same sign, motion carries. Action item E, the Safe and Secure Schools Grant Application.
So, um, that's, that's what we applied for last year, to pay for the SRO addition and, um, a control, secure access control unit over the elementary school. That will hopefully be installed here soon. That is a 50-50 matching grant, so the Safe and Secure Schools Grant is 50-50. The legislature only appropriated so many dollars to that fund for this grant, and so last year, we applied for a little over $60,000 worth of coverage. We ended up only getting $13,000, because there were so many applications in the state, they didn't award it based on what your request was. They just took your FTE, the number of students each district, and divided it by the pot of money that was there, and that's what we got. So if you were a large district, you got a lot more money, of course, there needs are larger. If you're a smaller district, student count wise, you got a smaller pot of money. So, um, this year, we used it to, um, pay for the SRO, um, in the partnership of the city. And then we also use it to put the door controller on. We did have a little bit left over because of the length of time it took to get the SRO established. We didn't use all the funds, because we weren't able to start off right away, just because getting the training done and getting scheduling done. So we are going to update a few doors over at the elementary school, exterior doors on that, with some of those funds. Um, it still will cost us a little more out of pocket, but we capitalized, we have about $7,000 left over that we got to match. I'm on that grant. So my question for the board, though, is the new grant process, it was just released last week, it's due at the end of this week, they gave us a two-week window to get it done. I don't know what, what we can apply for, we need some windows over there as well. Haven't got information back on the windows, because they're a different style of unit in the wing and the annex over there, they're not the commercial, aluminum clad windows like we have Manco puts in, they're more of a residential style window. So I know we're working with, um, Abby over there to get some bids for that. I didn't know that would be something that would qualify for the Safe and Secure School Grant. But if we can get the information on pricing in on time, I just don't know. It's due on the 9th, so I'll have to have that application in before we'll have a chance to meet again. So I didn't know what the, what the, uh, pulse of the board is on that, is that something we just want to not worry about, not do for next year? Or do you, would you like me to go ahead and apply for it? If the windows come in, I'd say at $20,000, that would be, we'd get $10,000 of the pay for through this grant, if they awarded that much money, most likely they won't. But we can always reduce the scope of work down to match how much money they do award us. Or is it something, I would halfway get the bids in, and then fill out the grant application and submit it, but we won't, that'll be a pretty quick turnaround. So I didn't know what, what the pulse of the board was on that. If you'd rather just wait and not worry about this year, um, or you're okay with me reporting back to you and showing Ben, turning in the grant, but then giving it to you, so you know what's in that grant.
The grant's due by the 9th, which is this Friday.
Yeah, it's the 9th, I don't know what day.
How's the SRO fit into this?
We, so, great question, we can't, the grant doesn't allow you to pay for an SRO that's existing, it's only for startups. So, um, SRO, we're still planning on continuing that partnership with the city, uh, we just won't get a portion of the pay for through the grant. We can pay for it out of our budget, so, but the city's still willing to partner with us to pay.
I think there's some value to that.
Absolutely. Been a great, a great addition.
And we can continue that regardless of the grant.
Right, the grant will have nothing to do with the SRO moving forward.
So we're just looking at windows and.
Anything that's school safety. Yeah, anything that, there's some parameters within it, it's secure entrances, security cameras, intercom systems, you know, we need to address Prairie Heights' intercom system. But that scope for what they, those systems cost, when we did these two buildings, it was almost a half a million dollars. Um, and that was what we use the Department of Justice Grant for as part of that. That's why the Prairie Heights got skipped on this last round of upgrades with those digital intercom systems, because the funds weren't there to do all three buildings. So we did the biggest two buildings, because that was the most cost that we could use the Department of Justice Grant for. This Safe and Secure School Grant will not even be close to covering what the cost to do that is. That will either be looking for another grant situation, or rolled into something like Mr. Coleman was talking about, through a, a larger upgrade, a larger renovation.
I just want to make sure I'm understanding, so like, we, I'm gonna throw big numbers out. The grant might give $20,000 to use for windows, doors, whatever, safety stuff. And then, we, how would it work as far as monies go, we match it, or?
50-50.
Okay, so it could pay for some portion of something that we might already be prioritizing.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, so just, you had to recap.
I just wanted to make sure my mind I was understanding.
It's confusing, we're talking about $75, $20.
Right, yeah.
50-50 for this grant, so yeah, no, it's good to clarify. This grant is the 50-50, so whatever the state awards us, for this, this year, they awarded us like $13,000 and some dollars. So we've got to match, whatever project, we could do a $27,000 project, basically, and we would, we paid half of it out of district funds. So whatever they award us, let's say these window, window estimates come in at $25,000, um, and we put in for $25,000 for the grant, they would pay half of that. And then we would pay half of that, $25,000. Now, the reality, though, will be, they probably won't award us $25,000 because of, um, the amount of application. It all depends on the amount of applications at the state, because there's only, I think, $5 million in that pot of money that the legislature appropriated for that. So if they get $20 million with requests throughout the state, there's no way they can fund that, so they just assign it based on your, your student count. That's how we got $13,000.
So do you have time to get the specs on the windows and do that?
I'm gonna try, I mean, if, if it's okay with more, I'd like to try to do that. I'm, I'm hoping we can get them in. I know Abby, um, with Building Blocks, has been working and helping me with that. She's provided me some numbers for the doors that she worked with VHS Construction on, um, that we're gonna use the additional amount of that grant from this year to help replace some frames, the window, um, doors and, and frames over there on that annex portion, the exterior doors. I'm hoping to, I just, I don't know what the reality will be, if we need to do it in the next four days.
So worst-case scenario, we don't get the funds we're looking for, for the project, but we're looking at a project that will increase safety.
Yes. But at that point, we have a decision, like, whether we move forward with that project or we put it off.
Whether we put the full money to do the project or we not do it.
Yeah, what it's gonna cost us on this deal is your time.
Is nothing at this point, except opportunity and cost, right?
So we can say, yay or nay.
Yeah.
Yes.
If we needed to.
Well, we can.
Well, yeah, so.
Oh, you can't, because, yeah.
Yeah, once we turn it in, and the state approves it, um, we're not, we don't, we're not committed, we don't have to spend it, but it doesn't, you don't want to not do that, because then they've got to send that money back to legislature and say, hey, UST 417 didn't use $14,000, and we're all asking for more money. And then they say, why is everybody asking for more money and say, school, but you didn't spend what you had. So once, if we put in, or we wanted to commit to doing whatever we put in for, so if we put in, for, you know, I don't know what windows would cost in that annex portion for those seven classrooms, but let's just say hypothetically $20,000. And that's what we put in for, and it costs us $10,000 out of our budget to do, that's, it needs to be done anyhow, so it's $10,000. and that's what we put in for, and it costs us ten thousand out of our budget to do, that's, it needs to be done anyhow, so it's ten thousand dollars and three dollars. Yeah, and if they only give us for that twenty thousand dollars, they said they only come back and give us another thirteen thousand, well, we just have to pay a little bit more out of our budget, so. And I wouldn't want to put in for a, a large, like a hundred and fifty thousand dollar window replacement, because, and be committed to that for fifty-fifty, but smaller, smaller process like this, I'm comfortable with.
Okay, so what we're seeking is approval to submit the Safe and Secure Grant Application that is due by.
Right, Madam President, I request that we approve the submission of the Safe and Secure Schools Grant Application for the 2023-2024 school year.
There's a second. It's been moved by Jamie, seconded by Kelsey, to submit a Safe and Secure Schools Grant Application by the ninth for the 2023-2024 school year. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you, opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Madam President, I move that we go into an executive session to discuss confidential student information pursuant to the exception relating to actions adversely or favorably affecting a student under coma. I would like, we would like to have the board, Mr. Doty, Heather Honus, Kelsey Brimmer, and Jared and Lindsay Laramore during this time. Or, and we will return, or resume business in the boardroom in thirty minutes.
Second, it's been moved and seconded that we go into an executive session to discuss confidential student information pursuant to the exemption relating to actions adversely or favorably affecting a student under coma with Dr. Doty and Mrs. Brimmer, Mrs. Honus, the board, and Lindsay and Jared Laramore for thirty minutes. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you, opposed, same sign, motion carries, and we'll start that thirty minutes once we clear the room.
If you wouldn't mind maybe hitting the air conditioner again, please. Awesome, thank you.
I'm sorry, who was the second? Hi, guys.
We're now back in open session.
Madam President, I move that we go into an executive session to discuss an individual employee's performance pursuant to non-elected personnel exemption under coma, and the meeting will resume in the boardroom. With the board and Kelly Gentry.
There's a second.
I'm sorry.
One second, it's been moved and seconded that we go into an executive session to discuss an individual employee's performance pursuant to the non-elected personnel exemption under coma with the board and Mrs. Gentry for twenty minutes. All in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you, opposed, same sign, motion carries, and that time will start once we clear the room.
I read the motion.
Mary Kay.
I seconded, Jamie.
Taking the sessions lined up.
Any questions about this? Sorry, Billy.
We're now back in our open meeting.
Madam President, I move we go into an executive session to discuss an individual employee's performance pursuant to non-elected, to the non-elected personnel exemption under coma with the board and Angie Staubommer. And then the open meeting will return in the boardroom in thirty minutes. One second, sorry.
Mary Kay moved, Jamie seconded that we move, we go into an executive session to discuss an individual employee's performance pursuant to non-elected personnel exemption under coma with the board and KSB attorney Angie Staubommer. All in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you, opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Is it S-T-A-L-L-B-A-U-A-R?
Yep.
We're back in open session.
Madam President, I move we go into an executive session to discuss an individual employee's performance pursuant to non-elected personnel exemption under coma with KAS, K A S B attorney Angie Staubommer and Mr. Doty, with the option to recall Mr. Doty as needed for thirty minutes, or return in thirty minutes, alright?
Yes, I'll second. Jamie, it's been moved by Mary Kay, seconded by Jamie. We go into personnel session, an executive session, discussion, individual employee's performance pursuant to the non-elected personnel exemption under coma with KSB attorney Angie Staubommer and Dr. Doty, with the option to recall Dr. Doty in our meeting as needed for thirty minutes. All in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you, opposed, same sign, motion carries, and time will start once we clear the room.
Why, after you make the motion, I just stare like. Madam President, I move we go into an executive session to discuss an individual employee's performance pursuant, pursuant to non-elected personnel exemption under coma with Angie Staubommer and Mr. Doty, with the option to recall Mr. Doty as needed for thirty minutes.
It's been moved by Mary Kay and seconded by Marie. We go into an executive session to discuss an individual employee's performance pursuant to the non-elected personnel exemption under coma with Angie Staubommer, the option to call Dr. Doty as needed for thirty minutes. All in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you, opposed, motion carries.
Mary Kay and.
And Marie.
Okay.
Time will start once we clear the room. We're in the open session.
Madam President, I move we go into executive session to discuss an individual employee's performance pursuant to non-elected personnel exemption under coma with Angie Staubommer and Mr. Doty, with the option to recall Mr. Doty as needed. We will be, resume the open meeting in thirty minutes.
One second. Marie, it's been moved by Mary Kay and seconded by Marie that we go into an executive session to discuss an individual employee's performance pursuant to the non-elected personnel exemption under coma with Angie Staubommer and the option to call Dr. Doty as needed for thirty minutes. All in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you, opposed, same sign, motion carries. Thirty minutes will start once we clear the room.
And would it be possible, does anyone else need some water?
We're back in open session.
Madam President, I move we go into an executive session to discuss an individual employee's performance pursuant to non-elected personnel exemption under coma with K A S B attorney Angie Staubommer for fifteen minutes, with the option to invite Mr. Doty in if needed.
I'll second. Who's Jamie?
Fifteen.
Yes, it's been moved that we go into an executive session to discuss an individual employee's performance pursuant to the non-elected personnel exemption under coma with Angie Staubommer and the opportunity to invite Dr. Doty back in if needed for fifteen minutes. All in favor, please raise your right hand. Opposed, same sign, motion carries, time will start once we clear the room.
We're just.
We are now in open session.
Madam President, I move we go into executive session to discuss an individual employee's performance pursuant to non-elected personnel exemption under coma with Angie Staubommer and with the option to invite Dr. Doty in if needed for ten minutes.
There's a second. Kelsey, it's been moved by Mary Kay, seconded by Kelsey. We go into an executive session to discuss an individual employee's performance pursuant to the non-elected personnel exemption under coma with Angie Staubommer, the option to call Dr. Doty and the board for ten minutes. All in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you, opposed, same sign, motion carries. Ten minutes will start once we clear the room. We're now back in open session.
Madam President, I move we go into an executive session to discuss an individual employee's performance pursuant to non-elected personnel exemption under coma with Angie Staubommer and Mr. Doty for five, and the reg, the regular meeting will resume in five minutes.
One second, been moved and seconded that we go into an executive session to discuss an individual employee's performance pursuant to non-elected personnel exemption under coma for five minutes. All in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you, opposed, same sign, motion carries. Time will start when we clear the room. We're now back in open session. Our next regular Board of Education meeting will be held July tenth at six PM here in the District Office Boardroom. I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
Motion adjourn.
Is there a second? All in favor for adjourn?